And we'll first consider action on our closed session items. And that is Mrs. Tossan.
Yes, Mrs. James. I move that the Board of Trustees assign the Level Three Employee Grievance Appeal of Christina Carson to Richard Hightower, who will serve as the Board's designated hearing officer under Board Policy DGBA Local.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tossan and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Motion passes. I believe we don't have any other closed session action items, so now we'll go on to Board members' reports. Mrs. Tossan.
Yes, Mrs. James. I have the Activities Report for the last month for Board members. First, Board members have attended staging STEM at Quail Valley Elementary, Reception for Teachers of the Year, the State of the City for Sugar Land, the Central Fort Bend Chamber Awards Luncheon, Leadership 102 Luncheon, the Kempner Academic Excellence Ceremony, the Lakeview Math, Science, and Health Night, the Fort Bend County Chamber Education Division Event on Fort Bend ISD CTE, Ferndale Henry's Red Ribbon Award Acceptance from DEA, National Signing Day Event at Wheeler Field House, Elementary Honor Choir Performance, the GCAA, it's the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards Meeting, Texas Commissioner of Education, Mike Marath Presentation to the Fort Bend Chamber, the Teachers' Art Show that went on this evening, we were glad to attend that, Elkins English Honor Society Induction, JV Varsity Basketball Games, Elementary and Secondary Teacher of the Year Application Review and Observations, the Rosa Parks Martin Luther King Day Go Green Celebration, Performances of Grease at Ridge Point High School, and various middle school basketball games and championship.
Oh, was that a little editorial in there, Mrs. Tossan?
We didn't actually win it, but we came really close.
Thank you. Well, that's, we have been very busy going through lots of things, so that's terrific. Next, we'll go on to Special Reports. Addie.
Thank you, President James. I am really excited to give this particular special report because it's important for us to have our communities partnerships with our schools, and I'm just excited about this particular event that I was invited to, and I just wanted to share it with my fellow Board members. The Honey Brown Hope Foundation hosted its 2016 We Love America Healthy Clean and Green Event that welcomed several Rosa Parks Elementary School administrators, teachers, students, and staff for a weekend celebration during the Martin Luther King Junior Day holiday, recognizing students' efforts to become healthy, clean, and green. This partnership included a Healthy Clean and Green Award Ceremony honoring winners of the Foundation's calendar, photography, and essay contests, exhibits from environmental-friendly vendors, a real live demonstration from the WCA Recycling Truck Operator, that was pretty interesting, and a presentation of students who produced a Healthy Clean and Green video. Performances by the Parks, the Rosa Parks Elementary School Choir and refreshments were served. The event also included a calendar exchange where guests received a 2016 calendar in return for canned goods and recyclable items. Through photography and written prompts, the We Love America Healthy Clean and Green Initiative encourages youth to appreciate different cultures, develop a healthy self-worth, and be good stewards of one's body and environment. It also motivated our youth and their families to become healthy, clean, and green change agents. This is the third year that the Fort Bend ISD students have participated in the Foundation's contest. Now, at this time, I just wanted to recognize some of those awards. Recognizing the event winners was Janisha Monorton, who's a third grader, Kelsey Patterson, fourth grader, Bethany Lewis was a fifth grader, Jordan Tate, a fifth grader. There, that represented the district, it was great to see Dr. Faust there, Dr. Dupree sent a word as well. There was also a community leader, Mr. Steve Brown, but it was a wonderful event. And why this is so important, you're like, why is she talking about this? It's important because those students had issues with their writing and reading skills, and this was an opportunity for them to participate in an extra, extra event to honing on those skills. And it was over, I think, 60 students who participated in this event. That's wonderful, you know? And so, when I heard that, I was like, wow, you know, we really, this is exactly what we need when it comes to partnership. And I just really, once again, want to thank the Honey Brown Foundation, Ms. Tammy Campbell and her daughter, and the whole Foundation for working with our schools, like Rosa Parks Elementary School, to make sure that our kids are not only healthy, clean, and green, but they are honing in on their skill sets with reading and writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Hollinger, for bringing us that report.
I have a report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice. Please, Mr. Rice, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I would just like to report that last Wednesday night, Mrs. James, Mrs. Tossan, and I attended the grassroots meeting at Region Four, which is where all the school districts in Region Four came together to put forth legislative priorities for the upcoming 85th Legislative Session. The legislative priorities from all 20 regions will be compiled, and they will weed out duplications, but then they'll be reviewed by TASB's Legislative Advisory Committee and distilled down further. Region Four has 10, can elect 10 representatives to serve on the Legislative Advisory Committee, and when they asked for volunteers, I'm proud to say Mrs. Tossan's hand went up immediately, and she volunteered. But that is going forward, and then this will be discussed at the TASB Convention in September. We did have a number of elected officials, state representatives there, to speak to us, including Representative Dan Huberty, who served on the House Education Committee during the last session, and he issued a pretty stark warning about the rough and rocky road public education is in for during the 85th Legislative Session, including vouchers, unlimited charter schools, and the fact that they're even going to try and remove TASB from being able to lobby our state representatives on behalf of public education. So I just wanted to point out that, per Representative Huberty's own admonition to all the school boards present, it's very important for us to reach out to our state representatives and our state senators and tell them of all the good things public education is doing. In the last Legislative Session, the 84th, there were almost 7,000 bills filed, and somebody has to go through all of those bills and determine which ones pertain to public education and which ones don't. And those that do, some are fairly, have, their intended effect is draconian on public education, and TASB works with all of the state representatives to ameliorate the more harmful aspects of those bills so that public education as we know it will continue to survive. So it's a clarion call to all of us to reach out to our state representatives and advocate on behalf of public education, because the stakes could not be higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and thank you for your continued leadership and legislative advocacy in our community and in our state. We appreciate you for that. Do we have any other special reports? All right, then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, and what items do we have to remove from the Consent Agenda?
A1.
A1, A6.
C.
C. Any others? All right, and I would entertain a motion for...
Madam President, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, with the exception of Items 11A1, 11A6, and 11C as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Any questions or discussion on the consent? All right, please vote. Motion passes. Now we'll look at Item 11A1.
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 11A1 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George regarding our CV Local policy for facilities construction. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Dr. Dupree, I'm in favor of this action, but here is my question. I would like to know when we will approve the budget for a project so that we might know what the contingency amounts are for the various components, be it the AE contract, the construction contract, so forth and so on. I don't know if we have already approved all of those. I know we've approved the bond program, but I don't know that we've approved individual budgets for this, and I think that, for, I would, I would seek your guidance in telling us what you intend to establish as a construction contingency, for example, for a new school versus renovation at an existing school where there's more opportunity for hidden conditions and unforeseen issues and so forth. And then, that's really a question. And then, I know that you, this policy states you'll be reporting back to the Board on a monthly basis on expenditures approved, and that you've got a process in place with the Facilities and Design Group to vet change orders as they occur. But how do we, how, when will we approve these, and what will the contingency amounts be?
Yes, sir. So, when working through the draft of this policy with the attorney, we all agreed it would be ideal for the Board to approve the budget at such time the architect is approved, so that it's all laid out with a clear understanding from the very first approval of anything related to that project. Being that we're well into architecture assignment and those types of things for this bond program, we felt like our next best point was when we bring the construction contracts. At that point, we will have allocated all the budget that we believe based on, and with our changing market, that makes it more challenging, but we think with that bit in hand, we'll be able to share the entire budget and seek Board approval at that time. So with the four remaining schools for construction, the middle school 15 and the three elementaries coming in May, we'll, we'll ask the Board to approve the full budget, including contingencies, at that time. The specific amount of any contingency to be included, we're still working on that from the procedural side, and it could vary from project to project, but our intent would be is that when we present that to the Board, we will also provide a rationale as to why we're seeking any particular contingency. Our goal is to include in procedure a, probably a range of what we would expect it to be, so the Board would be aware of what it would likely be, but then we would narrow it down when we bring the actual budget for approval.
Very well, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions on this policy, CV Local? All right, then please vote. Motion passes. The next item is EIA Local, which is 11A6, and I'd like to point out to the trustees, we had one kind of last-minute revision, it's at your place, at the very last, or at the second page of that policy, and it's in red up there, unauthorized access to written or electronic information. The word, the written part got accidentally deleted in the part, in the version that came out in our board book, when they updated it.
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda 11A6 as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we need to clarify about that, because as it was presented in the board book, it's different than it's, than this version on the, on our places. Can we have a clarification, Mr. Rice, about your, and Mr. Rosenthal, about your motion?
Well, with the Board's consent, I would revise that motion to include the revisions that have been added at our desk.
Okay.
Will that cover that, Mr. Morris?
It will.
And it's also shown on the screen there in red.
Provided that the Board, through consensus, agrees to the modification of the motion, and Mr. Rosenthal's second agrees, then it will suffice.
You agree, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, and I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion for the revised EIA Local as at, at our place, by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Tossan.
So I would also propose, we discussed at the workshop last week, on the finality of grades section, I had made a suggestion...
It's page, page one.
On page one, yes, one of two on EIA Local. I had, we had discussed the possibility of adding in that section something about grades that are entered that are not in compliance with a student's IEP. And it's my understanding, Dr. Dupree, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're gonna address that through regulation and through the student handbook. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, and so what I would propose is adding to the finality of grades section where it says in the last phrase, "are not consistent with the district's grading policy or regulations," since it's going to be addressed in the regulations. Is that something that we think is appropriate?
You asking me?
Well, I'm asking you, what is the, I mean, because, so, the reason that I suggested it was so that it would be something that would be in policy from the Board, something that we're addressing, that the Board is, is saying that we don't want grades to be treated as final and not able to be changed if they're not in compliance with a student's IEP. So I have no problem with it being addressed in the regulations, I just want to make sure at the Board level that we are, that we are putting in policy, really, I feel like it's something at the Board level that we should put into policy.
Well, I think, I know Beth had sent the language, it's basically one sentence that clearly indicates that, that, and I don't remember the exact language, but it has to do, that the situation you're discussing would be considered to be erroneous, which is addressed.
Erroneous, right.
So in my view, if the Board would like to add that sentence to the policy, I don't think that that, that would be inappropriate at all. I think, I would be, I would be more comfortable with that solution than, than putting a reference to procedure.
Yeah, and I think that that's probably, because I didn't, I, when we talked, in all fairness, I didn't understand that it was a regulation versus a different policy. So I think my emails back and forth today kind of fleshed that out, that I was not 100% sure, and I'm not sure what effect the regulations have over the policy, but I...
Do we have, excuse me for interrupting you, do we have that sentence that, available upon, that we could, so the, because I think, I was copied on that email, but I don't know that the rest of the trustees are aware of the sentence, that you're talking about putting in the regulations and the student handbook.
We do not have it to flash on the screen. If you could give me just a moment, I can pull it up from the email this afternoon and read it, and then...
Is this something where we want to go on with some more of our meeting and then come back to it? Mrs. Kaiser.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. A student's grade that is not in compliance with a student's IEP or grading modifications is erroneous and shall be corrected.
I think I would, I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, but I think I would prefer to have that in policy as something that the Board is speaking to.
So are you suggesting an amendment, Mrs. Tossan?
I'm suggesting an amendment, if the rest of the Board is...
Why don't you make that motion, and we'll see if we get a second, and then we'll have discussion about it.
Okay, so I move that we accept Policy EIA Local with the addition, or the revision of the sentence that, that Ms. Martinez read, "A student's grade that is not in compliance with a student's IEP or grading modifications is erroneous and shall be corrected." I move for approval of EIA Local with that revision.
Second. So we have, that's, this is an amendment to our original motion, so we're, we're adding the sentence. The motion is to add the sentence that Mrs. Tossan and Mrs. Martinez read regarding erroneous grades not in alignment with the I, a student's IEP. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
On the amendment?
Yes. So I'm, I'm reading this amendment, or the corrections to the amendment, as to say that if we find out that a student has not been provided its proper accommodations and those kinds of things, then there can be some corrections made to the final grade. Is that correct?
I think that, that's correct. That's the way I view it, is that we can, that teachers have the ability and, and administrators have the ability to go in and, yes, correct a grade or change a grade if that, if we find that there was noncompliance.
Is, Dr. Dupree, is that how you understand that?
Yes, that was, when Ms. Tossan brought this up last week, my first thought is that, is that that situation would be considered erroneous. So I think that the policy sentence does address clearly with that understanding.
No, but I agree with Ms. Tossan with needing to put that wording inside of the policy, because when you're, when you don't know, until you don't know that a child did not get his proper accommodations, there can be a, a fine line with whether or not it was erroneous or not, and I just like the clear, the clear verbiage in this documentation to support that.
All right, do we have further discussion? All right, so, let's see if I can find it. So we're adding the sentence to the policy, it's shown up there, we're adding the sentence, "A student's grade that is not in compliance with a student's IEP or grading modifications is erroneous and shall be corrected." So all those that are in favor of that amendment, please vote, or if you're, you can vote, if you're not in favor, you can vote that also. Sorry about that. Please vote. All right, so the amendment passes, so now we have a policy with that sentence added and the written or electronic information at the very second, on the second page included in the policy. Do we have discussion on that? Any further discussion on this policy, EIA Local? All right, please vote. Thank you very much, the motion passes. Our next item is 11C, which is the Partnership Agreements.
Madam President. Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda 11C as presented.
Second. We have a second, a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George regarding partnership agreements between Fort Bend ISD and colleges. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rosenthal.
I just pulled that out so I can abstain from that.
Okay. And I will also add a comment, a clarification, that we are, the list in the, in the item is not, is a list of current, places where we have current agreements, but it's not a limiting list that would limit us to agreements in the future. And Mr. Spears is nodding, but he's not speaking into his microphone.
Yes.
Those of you watching at home, all right. Do we have any more discussion on this item? All right, please vote. The motion passes. That concludes our action items for tonight, so we'll move on to information. And, Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am.
Please introduce the information items.
Yeah, the next item we have for information is an update on the 2016-17 Budget Development Process. Steve Basset, our CFO, is gonna present that this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, members of the Board. We're working very hard on the budget this year, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us that we'll be talking about, but what we're really trying to do more than anything else is trying to align what we're doing with the, the goals and the objectives that have been set forth by the, by the Board. So our director, or our Chief of Strategic Planning is gonna talk about this first.
Thanks, Steve. So our starting point for building the budget for 1617, of course, is guided by our mission, our vision, the Board's core beliefs and commitments, and certainly the goals and priorities of our current strategic plan, the 1516 school year, and then what our goals and priorities have driven us to assess as need in terms of our moonshot, and there are five moonshots, and I will go deeply into those five moonshots shortly and detail how they align with our goals, because we want to make sure that we're building a, a sound plan financially and strategically, strategically and financially, to meet the, the needs of all of our students in Fort Bend. And so, through this process, we've identified need and tied those to the goals and objectives in order to, to meet that goal for planning for the future financially.
And so our, our challenge, really at the, at the bottom there, you can see, is we're gonna need to try to work to redirect resources as best we can, even when revenue's declining. I mean, we, we still have, you know, a budget of $580 million, so we should be able to figure out how to reallocate those resources. Wrong way, sorry.
All right, so as we, as we work to meet the needs of the district, and certainly funnel those or filter through our goals and priorities, our, our first or top priority are those moonshots that we've identified, and as I mentioned, there are five of them. You'll notice here that first and foremost is to ensure that we have an aligned and a strong, effective, written, taught, and tested curriculum that is solid and it is implemented with fidelity. We are working to create district dashboards and scorecards that help to monitor that progress and growth in students and all of our student groups. And so you'll see here, the district dashboard falls into Goal One, and it also falls into Goal Five, because we are working to build dashboards and to identify the measures and metrics on both the academic dashboards and those that measure our effectiveness and efficiency on the operation side as well. Another moonshot that falls under Goal One is our student assessment program, identifying and, and being able to report multiple measures of student success so that we can use that information and, and certainly the data to make decisions moving forward. And so as we looked at building the budget, we looked at, at these three items under Goal One, but not limited to these three items, because as you well know, we have many performance objectives within our current strategic plan, and certainly our need speaks to moving forward, additional needs in the, in the district to promote continuous improvement and, and certainly for the support systems that are in place through our strategic plan. In Goal Four, Providing and Promoting Leadership Development at All Levels, that is a, a moonshot for us in, in creating a framework that is comprehensive in its approach to developing leaders at all levels, students and staff, all levels of staff within the district, and making sure that that program is connected to our core beliefs and commitments. Within Goal Five, we have two moonshots, one is the... One is the dashboards, as you saw on the academic side, which is our operational dashboard. And also creating that program development or program, excuse me, evaluation protocol to measure return on investment. Return on investment financially and return on investment in terms of effective and positive outcomes for students. And so those are two of our focus areas under goal five. I'm going to turn it over to Steve, but want to impress upon you and staff and everyone that's working on the budget that this was certainly our starting point and we will come back to our moonshots and come back to our performance objectives, keeping our key performance indicators front and center as we make our asks for the money to align with how to improve everywhere.
So when we give you more information, we'll show you exactly how some of those moonshots are being supported. So we'll give you information on those. So how are we going to get there? We're always going to be looking at our departments. We're trying to look the ways to carve out pieces of the budget from a department perspective. We look to the departments first as opposed to looking at campuses. I spoke last week about the free and reduced numbers that we have, and so we're really looking hard at those numbers. I have some slides particular to that, so I'll save some of the comments on there. Utilization of existing campus staffing. So with PASA, this being their second year and the fact that we're not having multiple boundary changes and things like that, we're very hopeful that the projections that we have on a per-campus basis and also on a per-grade basis are better than they were before. We had to add quite a bit of staff this past year when we were over in the elementary schools and stuff. And so we're hopeful that we won't have to do the same thing this coming year. So we're hopeful we'll be able to utilize the existing staffing that we have. Program changes, one of the examples on that was the early literacy, redirecting some of the resources to the different model for early literacy that we talked about. There'll be others, examples that we'd be bringing to you. Of course, we're always looking at utilities, other things like travel, substitutes, working to reduce those expenses. And a committed fund balance, which I've talked about before. So last year, we, this past budget, we utilized some of the commitment of fund balance for transportation. I don't think we'll actually have to use that, you know, to have a balanced budget in 1516. The numbers are coming in better because of the higher local values. But we have those tools in place and so we'll be showing you some proposals for how to use fund balance when we show you updated numbers in March. So some of the new things that have happened, there's a lot of things that are different with regard to the state economy and our CPTD values from the last time we taught. And so I'll be talking about that. Many of these have their own slides, so I'll get to those at the time. But the hold harmless formulas, I don't have a slide for that, but we definitely feel like the state template is still unstable. Okay? And I've been talking with some of my CFO friends and so we're, we're not sure, I mean, what does, what does that mean? You know, is the error rate between probably three to $2 million, probably? But anyway, we're still working on that. The hold harmless issue has definitely made things a little bit more difficult for TEA. So we're staying on top of that and hopefully we'll see some refinements soon. Also, one of the things, you know, we have slides for the uncollectible balances and the free and reduced. One thing that's definitely different from the last time we talked though is that Texas was placed on the watch list by Moody's. Okay? So that's very interesting if you didn't notice that. That happened a couple of weeks ago, Texas Tribune. And so they're doing that based on numbers. It's not based on rhetoric, it's not based on anything else. I mean, the rating agencies, you know, they're looking very hard on, at that. And so that's why it's certainly very important for us to be cautious as if we're looking to potentially add long-term expenses. Of course, we have the staffing recommendations and we'll show you some updated numbers. So different view on the sales tax growth. You can see we've had four straight months statewide of sales tax decline, okay? And so that's a, that's a bit disturbing if you think about back in 2009. Now, there were multiple, multiple months. That's the blue line toward the bottom where there was a decline. So if that continues on a month-over-month, month-over-month basis, we're definitely going to have to look very hard at things and it won't be a good outlook for the upcoming legislative session. That star is, that you can see up there on the upper left, that's where we're at for the, for the January timeframe. So we'll be updating that as we go. There's a couple of litigation things going on. You can say, well, why, you know, why do we care about some of the statewide litigation? These two cases, if they go south for the state, the state could lose a potential $10.4 billion in sales tax refunds just on these two cases alone. They're not in the appellate level, they're still on the lower court level. The ongoing losses from, from the sales taxes could be to the tune of $2 billion. But if they lost these two cases, it could almost totally wipe out the rainy day fund. And so anyway, we'll keep an eye on these and if we learn any things about them, we'll certainly let you know. But just let you know, we're keeping an eye on these things. Of course, oil is slipping. When the, when the oil was put, when the budget was put together for the last legislative session, the comptroller used $65 for his, his view. Whenever they looked at, relooked at the numbers in October, he was using 49 for, 4948 for the 2016, for 2017. He was predicting 5652. You know, as you can see, we're well below those numbers. And so, you know, this will be impacting the state's numbers as well. Lastly, the, the state has kind of put themselves, well, legislators, legislators have put themselves into a box with regard to if there is more funding, if there is more sales tax collections, they're going to be bound by law and by some of the constitutional measures that were passed to divert more into highway funding into the roads. And so, I mean, I do think this was, was known ahead of time with regard to the potential of the, the school districts winning their lawsuit and the state frankly not having as many options. So we'll have to, we'll have to see what happens with this. Okay, so the big, the big news for us this past month wasn't, wasn't particularly good. We had the local value growth in excess of 15%. Our CPTD value came in from the state at 14.5%. Before that, we were modeling 12, which was, which was reasonable considering some of the, some of the numbers we've seen in the past when the state has given us, given us their, their property value. And so that increased the, the, well, it decreases our state revenue to the tune of $3, $3 million for every one of those percent that's different than what we're projecting our local value growth to be. So right now, we're projecting our local value growth to still be a robust 9%, which is great. But when the, when that, but when that state value is growing at a higher amount, you're getting much less state revenue. And so the gap between those two numbers is eight point, 18.6. And you can see later when we show you the numbers, this accounts for why we will actually realize a decline overall in our amount of revenue, even though we're adding students. Okay? So that's the, that's, that's the factor. And this is one of the reasons why we'll have a surplus in the current year. Enrollment growth, so you know, here's our, our number for the low-growth projection, 74115. If you do the moderate growth, that you'll, you know, add 181. You know, given the, the economy and after the, the watch list stuff came out, we were talking to PASA and they did agree with us that it would be more prudent to use low-growth for, for our models. So that's what we're doing, just being a little bit more conservative there. And, and that, the value of that's about, you know, 850,000 in terms of just, you know, revenue. If we got all 181 more kids, we certainly would have more revenue. But I do think it's more prudent to be thinking about things from a low-growth perspective. Okay, so free and reduced enrollment. We were at 37% in 1415. In the 1516 year, we've dropped to 34%. And so the decline in the state comp ed funding that we would realize, and again, this, we would see this number in 1617 because there's a lag on this as well in terms of how the state comp ed numbers affect our formulas. $2.2 million is what we would lose if we don't work to change this number. So what we're trying to do is we're actually looking at lists, you know, campus by campus, looking at the families who, who had qualified last year that didn't submit and we're actually reaching out to them. I think we've had, I know we've had over 175 folks actually apply. We've sent informations to them saying, hey, you might be missing out on a benefit. We're doing that in conjunction with our efforts to collect our unpaid balances, which I'll show you here in a minute. And so anything we can do in this regard to improve our, improve the numbers in the free and reduced enrollment in terms of that amount going up, will have a significant impact on our revenue. So just so you know, when a, when a child does qualify for free and reduced, we actually get an additional 20% on a per-student basis from, from the state. And so it is, it is a significant number, all right? So you can see that things have been flat on the free and reduced. And so I think that those numbers could definitely be higher. And I think one of the reasons why they're not higher is because of our growth in unpaid cafeteria balances. So this is, just to be frank, you know, a little on the shocking side. And so I think we probably should have been talking about this a lot sooner. I realized last year that that number was over 300,000. I didn't, I wasn't looking at the trend, to be honest with you. I wasn't looking at the trend, I just knew that, wow, 300,000, that's a lot. I want to get something into the, the physical policy, which you, which you definitely approved, saying that, hey, we may need to do some collections and be a little bit more aggressive than this. Well, when, when we looked at the free and reduced numbers, we're like, well, wait a minute. Let's, let's, let's look at this a little bit deeper. And we definitely can think that one of the reasons why our free and reduced numbers have dropped is because we don't have aggressive collections. We don't really work hard on that. I mean, we send out stuff and the cafeteria managers make calls and things. But one of the things we found out is just from a system perspective, and we're going to overcome this, is that if somebody had a balance of $50 at the end of the year, and we send them that letter, when they start that next year, that $50 isn't there. We're not, we're not dinging them for that $50. And so people have figured this out. They're not collecting, you know, they're not paying. And so we're working on this, okay? So just know that we are working on this, we're taking this very seriously. The principals were very surprised when they saw this slide last Thursday and they know they definitely need to help with this. They also know, the principals know that, that the higher free and reduced numbers, you know, for their campus also do impact how performance is looked at in, in other ways. And so, so anyway, they're definitely stakeholders in this and we're working very hard on this. The one thing that we're tying this back to is back in '09, is when the alternative meal program was, was tossed out. And so we used, back in the day, we used to give an alternative meal to a child that, that had a, had a large balance or wasn't paying or whatever else. At the time, the, the board directed the child nutrition group to stop doing that. And so we're going to be, we're going to be bringing new procedures, policies on that to bring to you. And we'll have some information so you know what other districts are doing, make sure we're not doing anything that's out of the norm of other districts. So more information on that will be forthcoming, okay? So the budget development, the items in red are a bit different than last time. I won't go over all of them. The big numbers, the property, sorry. The property value growth of that 14.45 on the CPTD, that was the, that was a real tough number. We are using the low-growth estimate for the, the teaching positions and our staffing. Try to have a placeholder in there for special ed. We'll be like this with, with Ms. Hill as she goes along. And so we're, we're working on the budget. We have the initial staffing recommendations that you, that you've seen before. You just took action on to the tune of just under 1.5 million. And so right now, we're looking at surplus in the current year. I think that number's going to be closer to six to seven million, 1516. And so we're, but we're looking at a deficit on a current plan, the way the number's set right now, of 3.6 million. And so, you know, certainly, you know, working to, to improve those numbers. And that will certainly keep you, keep you up to date as we move along. Excuse me. So on the 29th, you'll have a demographic update. We'll also be showing you the, the staffing numbers for everything else, you know, the non, non-campus staffing, other, other campus staffing, the other funds and such. So we'll be bringing that to you. And then in March, we'll have the actual approval of the staffing. One item that's missing from here is we're going to be looking for input from y'all on the stipends. We're going to try to get those approved in March as well. Some of the potential changes on that. Give you budget updates both month. Renewals, non-renewals will be in April. Then you can see in May and June is when we'll be getting the CAD values. And so I'll be real interested to see what those numbers are. You know, if they're, if they're 10% instead of nine, well, then that's another $3 million, you know? So, so I'm trying to, you know, talk with the chief appraiser on a regular basis. And of course, we'll be adopting the budget in June. So, quick, I know it's late, but be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Is somebody else want to go first?
I'd say I just looked that way first. Mr. Rice, please go ahead.
Mr. Bassett, do I understand correctly that our growth in the unpaid cafeteria balances, so we're, we're north of $400,000 and by law, if that's uncollected, that gets charged against our general fund?
That is a true statement, sir. We can't raise prices on the child nutrition side to cover that. It's something that has to be done. We have to work it or else we do have to, to absorb that on the general fund side.
And would you, going back to your slide number eight, help me remember, what does CPTD stand for?
The Comptroller, do you remember? Comptroller Property Tax Division.
Okay.
And so that, that division of the comptroller's office, they have those values, they set those values and they distribute them out to all the districts.
When you indicated that Texas has been put on Moody's watch list, are you implying the state of Texas?
Yes, the state of Texas.
And why is that? Because of declining oil revenues?
Because of the declining oil revenues. I mean, yes, it is true that the state is much more diversified than it was in the 80s. But you know, Moody's felt like it was important to watch it. There's not a downgrade, you know, of the state at this time, you know, in terms of the state's level. But, but they are on the watch list.
Okay. And then on your, let's see, the, these two state tax litigations, I mean, AMC Theaters may have a potential of $6 billion in refunds from the movie house?
Yes, sir. That, I mean, that's, these are slides that we got from O'Casey in the state briefings that I attend. But I mean, that is a, you know, large operation. And that's in arrears, it's many years in arrears.
Okay. And then one, one more thing, which I really appreciate, your forecasting revenue. And on slide 11, you're forecasting a gap or a loss. Are you forecasting a loss of $18.6 million in state revenue?
Right, our state, our state, our state number is going to go down significantly. The value of that, of that difference, where is that? Let's see. Okay. Yeah, it's 14, I'm sorry. The value of that difference between those two growth numbers is 18.6 million. And so we'll show you, we'll show you some detail next time on, on the state number. Whenever we show you the revenue, we'll have it broken out for you between local, local, state and federal with the percentages so that you can see that. But you will definitely see another large increase in, in the local, local value percentage.
In the local, in the percentage of how much local property taxes are funding our district? Because the last time you presented, I think we were at 57%, something like that locally.
And it'll be higher.
And, and with a corresponding decrease, which is the crux of the entire school finance lawsuit and overreliance on local property taxes.
That's correct.
Also, it's my understanding that, and just help me understand if I, if I'm correct in this. In 2005, when Governor Perry re-compressed the tax rate from $1.50 to $1, he created the business franchise tax to help make up the difference, which has failed to make up the difference ever since that was enacted. And then in the last legislative session, Lieutenant Governor Patrick did away with a portion of the business franchise tax. It's my understanding he intends to do away with the balance of it next year. So then that funding mechanism will be lost to us as well. Is that correct?
I, I mean, if in fact it is taken away like that, I mean, I think it went down to the tune of 25% this, this past time. I just don't know where the money's going to be to be able to do that. I'd be very surprised. But, I mean, there's a lot that could happen, you know, within the next year. But I'd be very surprised if, if the pie is big enough for them to be able to do that.
Okay. Which is why we have set money aside in the fund balance for our own rainy day fund.
Yes, sir.
And we're projecting a net change in the fund balance of, of losing 3.6 million?
Right. And those, you know, again, these are really just, you know, preliminary numbers are going to be changing as we go, you know, through the spring. But, but those are the numbers we have.
But we'll still have a fund balance and we'll still be able to pull through. But that's why you're suggesting we look across the board at all of the departments to see where we can tighten up so that we can. to see where we can tighten up, so that we can maintain funding for our strategic programs, as Ms. Martinez has pointed out, and continue those programs, so that learning can continue across the district. Well, I just would like to thank you very much for this. And I think your presentation underscores the need for us all to continue to advocate on behalf of public education with our state representatives and state senators. Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We have additional questions, Mrs. Tosse.
Yes, thank you. Going back to the growth in unpaid cafeteria balances on slide 17. So is this growth carried over time? Is that why it's continued to increase, because we're continuing to not collect year over year? Or is that just for this year?
That's just for this year, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm sorry to say. But when we do collect, we are going to try to go back as far as we can.
So that was going to be my question. How much of this do we think is really collectible?
Well, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, I set to note to Dr. Dupree today, I mean, going to collections, you know, I think we're going to try to give folks the opportunity, you know, as best we can. We talked about the, trying to get a legal opinion on whether or not we can do a write-off if somebody does qualify for free and reduced. You know, is there a partial write-off? We have to worry about, you know, the gifting of public funds, of course. And so, but if there's an economic benefit, not just to that family, obviously, but to us as well in terms of higher revenue, you know, then a case can be made in that regard. But doing the collections, you know, in terms of somebody being called and it potentially impacting their credit, that's going to be a bit of the shock to the system from a cultural perspective, you know, from our school district. And so it's important for everybody to realize that. But you can see the numbers, though. I mean, the numbers really speak for themselves. And so, I mean, I do think that our taxpayers that are paying, I certainly think they expect us to ask those who aren't to pay, so that these numbers don't impact the education of their kids.
So a couple more questions on that. Are we looking, from a policy or procedures perspective, on how to prevent this from happening in the future?
Everything that we are putting together from a procedure perspective-
Not just a collections, but how are we going to get ahead of this?
We are working on that. We're brainstorming on how we can help principals with this. But no, we're clearly working on this. I mean, we've got to get this number down. My peer at Katie, they're under 30,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So I mean, I don't think any of us want kids not to eat, but, you know, this number is shocking, as you said. So do we think that a lot of this has to do with kids who might, would qualify for free and reduced lunch, but have not applied?
We think that that's a part of it. And we definitely think that that's a part of it. I mean, one of the things we're theorizing, the middle school numbers are up higher. And we think that, I mean, frankly, there's a lot of the middle school kids, they get cash, they keep it, they just charge a meal. You know, so.
Well, in some middle schoolers, you know, you don't get that yellow envelope as much as you do with the elementary school kids bring it home in their Tuesday folder. You know, the middle school kids, they don't bring that stuff home.
They might open it up and say, they don't need to see this, so.
Yeah, exactly. Or they don't know what it is, or they don't care, or they throw it away, or they forget, or whatever. So, yeah, are we thinking about doing something at the campus level to maybe get someone to help these kids, or contact the parents, or help them fill out the applications, or that kind of thing?
Again, we're going to be brainstorming on it. But one of the things that we are probably going to do, and we talked about it this morning, is having the free and reduced forms as part of the entire registration process.
I think that's a good idea.
Just, you know, hey, it's just part of the process.
You've got to fill it out, you've got to bring it back. Okay. I did have one other question.
Mr. Burdine has a question, so we'll let him jump in, and you can get back at it in a minute.
It actually pertained to that. I don't want to continue to beat this up. But did you say that it may be, folks have found a way to game the system, so to speak, as far as it may be a growing culture in a sense?
I mean, I would definitely think so. I mean, given the straight line of these numbers, I mean, it's definitely something. I think there's multiple factors.
I just wanted to, I want to make sure I heard you right on that.
Ms. Hallinger? I would just add, I know that clearly we have a problem with the $350,000. But when you stated that the balance is not brought over to the next year, that also concerns me for the inverse of those who do pay and have balances in their children's accounts, especially if the child is, I mean, I know that's maybe a smaller issue, but to me, that's more of a process issue, procedure on how we do things when it comes to collecting funds. Because if I have a balance at the end of the year, if my child graduates, then their account is just gone. Do they get a check back? Do I get a check back? And then for the next year, you don't have to answer that necessarily today, if we don't know it. But then for the next year, you know, if I do have a balance, I'm expecting that if I have a $4 or $5 balance, that that applies to his account for the beginning of the new year. So to me, that's a procedural issue.
Yeah, I think the balances do carry over on a per student basis, when they have a positive balance.
But not the, yes, they do.
But not the negative.
Ms. Stoller, would you like to come to the microphone, please? And I don't believe it's turned on, so please turn it on.
Okay, all the positive balances carry forward. It's just the negative balances that do not carry forward. When someone graduates from high school, they have the opportunity to request the money to be returned to them, and we have a form that they fill out. It's a reimbursement form. They fill it out, and then we send it to accounts payable, and they cut up a check.
Okay, I have a little concern with that. Maybe I need some clarity with that, because once the child has graduated, right, their account is no longer visible. My child's account is no longer visible.
Well, it's still in our system.
So then that means that the parent has to rethink, okay, let me contact the district to find out if there was any account left in my child's funds? I'm just, it's just a procedure, just a procedure, because.
We'll need to look into that.
Only because, me having multiple kids in a district, when my child starts the new year, this past year, the first thing I was thinking, let's see how much money is in my first child's account. Can I put that in my second child's account? That kind of thing. And also, when it comes to middle school kids having a lot of balances, I just know there is an increased amount of food that is consumed by our middle school children. I know they're getting several lunches, you know. They are. They're getting several lunches. And so the parent might only be paying for X number of dollars worth of lunches, but that child is going through this line and this line. Just from a parent perspective, this is what I'm seeing.
Well, the point-of-sale will catch that student when they go through this line and get a reimbursable meal, and go through this line and get a reimbursable meal. And it will show us that a second meal has been consumed. And then our managers take the second meal report that they get at the end of the day, and they review every second meal that has been sold that day to try to determine if it is an actual student going through two different lines, because we can run the reports to find out which line they go on, which they enter through. So we do have checks and balances for that.
So is that something new?
No. It's our WebSmart point-of-sale. We've been using it for years. We switched over from Linux in 2056 to a web-based, but we've been using the same system.
I mean, I'm only speaking from personal experience. This is nothing that no one has told me. When my child has gone to school and has spent $6 or $7, literally, for a lunch, and I have to go in and say, please, limit the child to $5 or something like that per day, because he is consuming and getting that much, right?
Yeah, and we put the maximum that the parent wants. If they want the child to spend no more than $5, that's entered onto their account.
But that goes back to where my original thought was. When you have just kids consuming food, I just can't imagine-
There's a lot of merit in the middle school.
I just, right, in middle school, I just can't see, it's hard for me to imagine this $350,000 being consumed greatly. I can't wait to see the numbers, just by free and reduced lunch students.
Oh, no, I don't think it's just free and reduced.
It's not just free and reduced students. And I'll not say anymore on that, not free and reduced.
Just to piggyback on that, I would also say that communication in this area, I think, could be greatly improved, because I did not even know that that was a possibility. And I have a child with Down syndrome that's buying four chicken sandwiches a day and giving them out to her friends. So no one ever even told me that I could put a cap on it. I mean, we're trying to ard that stuff. So I think communication could be greatly improved in that area, so that parents understand the accounts, what the balances mean, how, you know, how they can put limits or caps on their kids. Because it could be that there are some parents or some families that don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but they have a child that's buying five lunches a day, and at the end of the day, they can afford five lunches a day. So, because I know when Abby comes home, and I get a reminder that, hey, her account's low, I'm like, I just filled it up two weeks ago, what's happening? So I can see that happening, you know, with others. Yeah.
All right. Work to be done. Who else has a comment? Mr. Rosenthal, or question? Mr. Rosenthal?
The Moody's downgrade. How will that affect our bond?
Well, I mean, it certainly, it would have a big impact if it was a downgrade. You know, but just being on the watch, I mean, the permanent school fund is still really solid. And I do think the permanent school fund is looked at separately, you know, from the state of Texas, from its operating accounts. And so, you know, a lot of the other districts, you know, have been doing refundings. We'll be looking at that again. We'll have something for y'all to look at in March. And their transactions have been pretty solid. So, you know, we've been looking at that. So I haven't seen anything.
Okay. And then you say here, remember, fund balance does not equal cash balance. Can you just explain that again?
Well, the fund balance is an accounting number at a point in time. You know, so when we close the books at the end of June, that's a point in time where you have, you know, revenue minus expenses, net income, and then that number drops to the fund balance. The cash balances will change frequently.
All right. Mr. George, do you have a question?
I've just, I know we already talked so much about it, but you said, I'm talking about the same slide. What I like to see is you said you guys are brainstorming how to, you know, tackle this issue. And obviously, if some people know, you know, end of the day, if I don't pay, it is okay, then, you know, they take that route. And that's what it looked like up to certain extent. And I think it is not fair to the people who honestly pay. And we should have some kind of a system, at least for the 15, 16 school year. And also, my one question is, why the positive balance roll over, the negative balance don't roll over? I mean.
A systematic issue, and we'll have to correct that.
Okay. Okay. And I like to see some kind of a system in place, so that we understand those who need help. But at the same time, those who take advantage of the system, we cannot, this is a big number. Everybody acknowledge that.
Right.
Okay, the negative balances don't roll over in our system, because the federal government will not allow us to assume negative balances in our operation. That's why the federal government requires the money to come out of the District 199 General Fund to pay this, so that we don't carry negative balances. So that's the reason the negative balances don't roll. Many years ago, before this federal reg came out, we rolled the negative balances forward, back in the 2000, back in there. We rolled those negative balances forward and tried to collect them during the next school year. But when that law went into effect, then we couldn't do that any longer.
So basically, we'll never be able to do that, because people will just take advantage of that and just wait till the end of the year and say, I don't have a balance. I don't have a negative balance anymore.
But, Gail, we still are, we are still owed that money. I mean, we have the money in our system. We know those numbers, they're still in our system. We could still work to collect the prior year numbers. It's just not in our, it's just not in that system from that billing perspective. So we're going to have to figure something out.
So one of the things I wanted to share is, we're going to be working on policy to discuss the grace meal period. The board has the authority to define a grace meal period, to say, you know, after five meals or after a student reaches negative $15, something to that effect. And especially with the middle schoolers, it could be that a number value would be better than an actual meal count. And we're going to be bringing that policy to the board with some recommendations about providing specific information about grace meal periods. And we're also going to ask the board to consider that alternative meal, what the child nutrition department is going to be able to do, so that a student doesn't just continue to receive the same meal and rack up those fees. So those are things that we are working on. There's a big committee that's working on this brainstorming, as Mr. Bassett has shared. But we're also putting that work into our policy review.
Thank you, Ms. Wincomb. Do you have any other questions? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to just bring the conversation back to slide 14, because like Mr. Rice, I'm quite concerned in the revenue gap. And I guess my understanding of that is because we, the gap comes from the projections from, I guess, the projection one year ahead from numbers one year behind. Is that how it kind of goes?
Well, that's right. The state property value is always one year behind our local values.
Right.
And so they know that there's a big growth, and we're realizing that now in our current collections, okay? And so because of that, they'll adjust those numbers and what they give to us on a per student basis in '16, '17.
So how do we adjust our spending, or in this case, I guess, adjust our budget to prepare for that gap if we are in the current year, where we're in the high-yield year, and we know we're headed for a low?
And so, I mean, that's exactly what we're in the midst of doing now. I mean, we're looking at all of our resources. You know, we set aside, you know, some of the designated fund balance amounts. If we need to use those, we can. And so that's really how we go about it, is really just from a planning perspective and looking at our resources, looking at those allocations.
So we have to be cautious about the things we're spending money on, that they're not encumbering us going forward as a regular encumbrance in our operating fund.
That's exactly right. And so, I mean, I've shown these slides to the, you know, to the BCC, the, all of the bookkeepers and the secretaries that help with the requisitions. They saw these at the business breakfast. So folks understand, okay, so, gosh, why aren't they recommending a raise? And so it's about, you know, where we are from a current perspective. But then also, we really want to be careful to add those additional costs going into the '17, '18 year, when things really could be bad from a state perspective. Now here, this is the kind of the local, more of the local issue going into '16, '17, statewide, '17, '18. And so that's why, you know, we're having the message, but we're doing it from the perspective that we just want to make sure our employees, whenever we talk to you, that we have a plan. And we think about these things, and we've set funds aside, and, you know, people shouldn't, you know, worry or fret. You know, yes, it's a bummer to not necessarily, you know, get a raise in the coming year, but if we can do something with regard to the retention supplement, we'll make those recommendations. So, but that's the tack we're taking.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bassett, for your hard work on this. And we'll look forward to continuing the conversation. Mr. Rice, do you have another question?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Bassett, because I think the most important thing our CFO can do is anticipate revenue, which gives us time to plan for the vagaries of state collection. So we had a great CAD appraisal increase last year, and now everything's down. And 12 months later, we got the double whammy. But because of careful planning and because of reserving an amount in our fund balance, we're okay for this year. We're going to have to tighten our belts a little bit. But that's the crux of the whole thing, that's, we cannot continue good, solid programs without good, solid funding. So I think we're going to be good this year, but we have to be very careful going into '17, '18 and beyond. And I just really appreciate your work, Mr. Bassett and your staff, and Dr. Dupree, everyone, for anticipating this, planning ahead, looking at those areas that we can tighten our belts- that we can tighten our belts now, so that we can continue the solid educational programs that we know we need to educate our kids. Thank you.
And Mr. Rice, I'll just add to that, because, I mean, what this slide is showing, and Mr. Bassett said, was our, our revenue is declining, but yet our number of students is increasing. So when we have to service more students and we have revenue declining, it puts us in a very difficult position. And then when you add declining oil prices to that, and what's gonna happen the next year and the next year, you think, well, we really need to be careful what we get going, because we can't sustain it if we aren't careful. And so we have to be careful. So thank you, Mr. Bassett.
And just, you know, I really, I appreciate all the kind words, but I really have a good staff helping me. So, so anyway, Dean O'Brien and.
And we see them there in the back row. Thank you very much for staying tonight. All right. I think we're on to our next information item.
Yes, ma'am. The next item was very brief. We're, as we're in our comprehensive policy review cycle, we have given you the book this evening. I think Beth just has a couple of comments about the policies in the E-series that we're gonna present to you for approval in the month of March.
Very brief, yes.
Wink, wink, we got that.
I just wanted to give you a brief update to let you know that we did share with leadership this past week, the policies that were approved by the board for deletion or revision or creation at the last board meeting. And we asked leaders to share that information with their staff. That was also provided to them in writing as well, and that's our plan moving forward. We have face-to-face meetings with them monthly to provide that information on the policy updates, and then we back that up with written communication. I'll just move forward and let you know that the, I know you might be sad because you did not receive a binder this evening, but this is a smaller section of the E-policies, and so these are the policies that you were presented this evening that we will ask for you to take action on after we have a chance to review them at our next board workshop, so moving into March. I also wanted to circle around to the conversations that we had at our last board workshop, on some of the questions that were brought up and the conversations we had around the administrative regulations, and let you know that we are continuing to do work on those regulations and on the policies for further consideration. And we'll be bringing those to you in the coming weeks as we make recommendations on the local policy, certainly. And then as we make changes to any of our administrative regulations, we'll share that information with you too as an update. And so that just kind of brings you up to speed on where we are right now and the policies that you have at hand. Our next policy series to bring to you will be the D-series. We're wrapping up quite nicely with E. Only have a few more to go, and then we'll head into D. And staff is working right now, a large group of us, on every one of the policy series now. So we're spinning all those plates on A through G.
Excellent. I have a couple of comments or questions. If we could go back one slide. It said at the bottom, E-series policies for further consideration. So our binder has the numbered ones listed in, sorry, excuse me, our spiral has the, those policies listed. And then the E-series policies for further consideration, what's, what's happening with those?
Those are the policies. We talked about a few of them last week. They were first provided to you in the binder in December. And so those specific policies that the board mentioned last week are the ones that we're going back in a group and meeting with the, the departments that are impacted or that have input into those policies. And we'll be bringing you any recommended policies for revision at the March twenty-eighth board meeting. We'll give us the time to work on those, present those, and then we'll discuss them as usual at a board meeting, at a board workshop, pardon me, and then ask for action at the following board meeting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that. And then you also mentioned the regulations that are going along with these that you're working, your team is working on. And are those going to be posted on the website or public, available to the public for viewing? Or is, what happens to regulations as we update them?
Regulations are discussed in E-team, and then once they're, they are finalized, then they're posted on our internal site, which is our pipeline, where we have our administrative regulations. We follow the same communication process out to our staff, and we'll share that information with the board as well. Those policies that impact students, we're making sure that we provide information in the student handbook, so that they will have that information. As an example, when we spoke about the EIAR changes, there are others, other than the one that we did include in EIA local policy, and those we're ensuring are in the student handbook moving forward, so that parents and students will have that information.
Okay, so the regulations are not visible to the parents or to the public, but if there's a relevant piece, then we're putting it in the student handbook?
That is, that is accurate. Currently, our pipeline is not public-facing with our administrative regulations. However, there are plans for making that change, and I think Cynthia is.
So we're working through the comprehensive policy review, and the plate of regulations is spinning. Anything that immediately impacts students, parents, community, staff, are, are being included in the student handbook, or in the guidelines that are provided on the website, like the course guidelines, things like that, employee handbook. But when we are done with our comprehensive policy review, we've already had discussions with TASB so that we can move to newly revised regulations being put on our online manual. That is going to be after we finish the comprehensive policy review, because we may get to a later policy that impacts a regulation. We don't wanna put those up until we're through the whole series A through G.
Got it. And I know all, a lot of these things are interrelated, as we've talked about, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. Do we have any other questions or comments from anybody? Would you like to make a motion, Ms. Hellinger?
I'm motioning.
Oh, whoa, 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 we can't do that yet, because I forgot to call on Terrell.
You can go right ahead. I am fine. You all can read what I'm gonna say.
Oh, we'll highlight it for us. Dr. Dupree, what would you like to tell us?
We have a meeting in two weeks on the twenty-ninth. We're gonna do the annual demographic update. We're gonna talk about the annual enrollment review that evening, about how we're gonna utilize our schools next year. And we're gonna talk about staffing, based on what you've heard this evening. So that'll be a pretty comprehensive planning. And we're also gonna do the superintendent's formative evaluation for the quarter, as well as kind of talk publicly about an innovative school improvement plan that we're looking forward to sharing with the board. Again, really, you can read most of this. There's nothing major. The budget's the big item, the technology plan coming up in March at this point, but other than that, it's bond programs and planning for the next school year.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions? All right, Ms. Hellinger.
I move that this meeting is adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.